Recording in progress.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the August eleventh meeting of the Southwest Tech School Board. Um, and I hope everyone's enjoying their summer thus far and not quite ready for school just yet. Let's enjoy a little bit longer. Uh, so, uh, first item on the agenda is called the order done. Next is, uh, any public comments from anyone at home then? No one is in the room? It's quiet. All right, all right, we're gonna move on then. Our next, uh, item is an executive session. Uh, and then we will be coming back after this. It is to do with contracts under one VSA, section three thirteen, page one K. Could I have a motion to go in executive session, please? Make the motion in two seconds. Third, two. All right, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and Meg, our superintendent will be joining us. And sorry, any, uh, abstentions or names? So there's, we will be back shortly.
And pause recording. At TV, I'm gonna put you in the reading room.
Okay, I have a motion to come out of executive session, please. I make that in two seconds. Second, great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed or minutes? Okay, good. Fine, we'll be up. We have the consent agenda, uh, which contains the minutes from our last full warning, which was Monday, June ninth. Could I have a motion, please? Aye. Make a motion to reverse, and then in second, great, okay. Oh, Asher's up there too. Okay, great. Um, any questions on minutes from anyone?
Um, yes, uh, it's definitely not a big deal. On line five, page three, to where it says my name, believe it or not, A. Edelson. There's not a space between the period and the Edelson. It's really, uh, not a big deal at all, just a a small, an excuse to bring up discussion during minutes more than anything else, but.
Excellent, yeah, so notice it. Anything else in the minutes? Any questions? Nope?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of approving the minutes from Monday, June ninth, say aye.
Aye.
They have them, all right. Any abstentions and any names? So we have the payroll warrants, uh, one thousand, thousand two, thousand three, thousand forty, thousand fifty. Are there that a motion for discussion? Pretty well designed and the add approval. I'm, I just need a mo- a motion second, then we got this guy. All right, I need that motion. Thank you, second, second. Okay, any discussion on any of the payroll warrants? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Or any abstentions? So uh, we have the vendor warrants, one thousand one, thousand forty-nine, thousand fifty-one, thousand fifty-two, and a thousand four. Have a motion for discussion? Any discussion?
Yeah.
First, second.
Same.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the vendor warrants? Well, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Any abstentions? So uh, FYI, we have cash flow and revenue expenses and the charters report. Those are in our Dropbox or in your packets if you've got them. Uh, committee reports. Policy, uh, uh, Tim is not here today, but is there anyone that would like to provide a recap from the last meeting, which I believe was at the end of June, if I didn't recall the date, I can't remember exactly.
That John, I have sworn nothing, being on the policy day, for having nothing.
Nothing to report, okay. All right, uh, we'll save a full, more full committee report to next time, and I'm very sorry. That's okay.
Yeah.
It, it's a lifetime of year for the polls. Things some. Okay, uh, moving on to action items, uh, we have retirement, um. Meg, would you like to handle this one?
Sure.
Or talk about it, I should say. I, I, I could do, I think, better going than you.
Uh, so it is with great sadness that I read this retirement letter to you, um, this evening. I will try and get through it, um. It is addressed to, uh, Meg Hunsinger, uh, Rebecca Tattersall, and the Regional Governing Board members. Allow me to first deeply thank you for allowing me, um, to share the last twenty years with you here at CVC slash Southwest Tech. It's been a privilege to work with so many professionals, meet many of the district students, and serve this community through some very interesting times. With that being said, I declare the reigning of Sandra Redding as your everything from office manager to administrative assistant to be heading towards its conclusion. It is time for a new face, new talents, and new technologies to assist in continuing the masterful forward progression of this great institution. I'm willing to continue my position through mid-August two thousand twenty-five to assist in a smooth and seamless transition, exact date to be determined for the needs of administration circumstances. Gratefully and respectfully, Sandra L. Redding, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent. Um, and what I would like to say is that I, um, chose to give Sandy a thank you card as opposed to a retirement card for everything you've been my last eleven years here to me. Um, she's been the first face that I've seen when I walked in the door every single day. Um, and you truly will be missed. Um, and I have to say that, you know, part of me deciding to become superintendent was because I knew that you'd be there. Um, and you were definitely there for me, and I can't thank you enough for your years of service, um, but then also all the support that you've provided to everyone that has walked through that door, whether it's been a student, a community member, a board member reaching out to say, help me get to my, my, you know, Dropbox, um, to teachers and staff and paraeducators, so thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much. It's obviously been a privilege to be here and part of this assembly of folks that are so professional and do such a great job, and I'm so happy to say I'm turning you over to very good hands, our new administrative assistant plus other things, and the way they're pressing, we change names all the time. So Tiffany is going to do a fine job. Boy, you can call on her and just pay attention and do whatever she tells you, because she'll be right. She'll be that confident. You're awesome. Thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you, Sandy, from all of us, like you said, that it really sound, we sound well, I just thank you. I've known you for years through being on board, probably thinking being a student, so, um, uh, you are a terrific woman, and we are certainly gonna miss you, but I know we're gonna make good hands, and, uh, uh, that second paragraph is pretty good. That's really, well, that's nice, that's very good. Anyone, uh, if anyone wanted to say anything, old comments, see your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanna echo everything that everyone has said so far and add that I look forward to seeing you out in the community and possibly doing even more, um, for the school.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, you better watch out.
Yeah, that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Asher?
Sorry, I just had to settle a staring match with my son using a smile, um. Sandy, I'd be lost as a board member without you. You know that full well, and I just really appreciate your years of service. I'm gonna say the rest of what I wanted to say in a response email to what you sent me earlier. Um, and I look forward to working with Tiffany, I believe, was, um, very soon. And also, I wanted to thank Dan, um, for helping me figure out the email. Because I am technologically illiterate millennial. Thank you, Sandy, for everything.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
No, they're actually, yeah, Sandy?
Yes.
Nope. Just for the year.
That's a nice year.
It's been a crazy year.
You have no idea about crazy times in this town.
No, I, I will learn about that. Thank you.
Yeah, as I told, as I warn people, I know where all the bones are buried.
See, that's it. Hunts are good. Thank you.
I'll, I'll keep those spices for her.
So who's gonna be in charge of the chocolate now?
Oh.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Uh, unfortunately, we need, uh, with deeper grab, a person and a second for this resignation. Or sorry, I'm sorry, retirement, excuse me. Yes, retirement, I'm so sorry. First, there's the, then second, retirement, my analogies. Um, is there any other further comments? On the reign of Sandra?
I know, it's like my email for Tiffany this morning.
Yes.
I didn't even make attention. I needed to remind her, but then I did yell at a sad, sorry. Word of that.
Well, all those in favor and what say?
Yes.
I guess. Sandy can enjoy her retirement, we would, she won't be far, she'll be around. Any, any names or abstentions? So, very, okay. Well, the next thing is, in the opposite world, we need a nominee, we have a nomination. Uh, which is attached, uh, here, if you were here, and might be in your Dropbox, I don't, then.
Yeah, should be in the Dropbox. Um, this is for, um, the attendance clerk and data assistant position. Um, the nominee is Sarah Pike. Sarah, um, Sarah's, so Sarah's position will be working in the student management database that we have, um, through Power School. Um, she'll be primarily responsible for attendance and assisting Tiffany in data collection that, um, is necessary, um, for, for us, but as well as, um, to share the state. Um, she will also be assisting, uh, Rob Bonney, who's the director of the adult ed program. Um, assisting him in, uh, registration and anything involved in the adult ed classes. Um, Sarah comes to us from Where'd You Get That?, which is a, um, store located over in Massachusetts. Um, her role there was a business manager. Um, but really, for this position, I think that stood out, what stood out the most was that she's a faculty member at CCB um, since two thousand and six, in which she, um, used various platforms, especially, uh, student management systems for attendance purposes, so she's familiar with uh, that area. Um, she also did some work at Bennington College and owns her own business, uh, called Free Fall Laser, um, which is a laser, uh, cutting specialty, uh, job.
Um, could I have, um, for purposes of discussion, uh, motion? Move seconds? Seconds, okay. Any discussion for Sarah Pike? Uh, what's like the background checks?
Yeah.
Uh, came back completed?
Yeah, the only one we're still waiting on is the finger, which is table.
Yeah, that's always.
That usually takes it down the piece.
Uh, but any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, all those in favor for Sarah Pike, the attendance clerk and data assistant? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? And any names? So, Eric, excellent. And we have, uh, two policies for adoption. Uh, I'll take it one at a time. First up is, uh, C one thousand twenty-five, which is public complaints of personnel. Um, if anyone had any comments to those, hopefully got into the policy committee before this, because it's been through several times. Um, any, anything of highlights? John, who is here for policy?
I, I have no highlights. Um, we've gone over this and I think it's good.
Yeah. Um, for purposes of discussion, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, yeah, second. Um, all right. Any further discussion on the policy? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of adopting C one thousand twenty-five, public complaints of personnel, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Or names? So, Eric. The next one is C, uh, one thousand thirty, school safety. Uh, for purposes of discussion, could I have a motion? Glenn, thank you. Second, all right, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? And any abstentions? Okay, so, Eric. Okay, Superintendent, you're up.
All right, so I am gonna bounce around a bit, so bear with me. Um, the, um, if you recall last year, um, I believe at the sex member meeting, I went over the AOE's program quality measures that they set forth for each of our CTE programs. Um, in September, I'll do another grid for you, um, that shows the, um, program quality measures and how Southwest Tech is needing them. Um, but I can tell you right now that every program meets and or exceeds all of those, uh, quality measures that the state puts out. Um, and I'm happy to, um, report that teachers continue to add more and more to their programs, um, which just continues to provide our students with increased opportunities. So some of the new additions this year, you'll see it, um, at the next month's meeting. Um, culinary is adding a baking theory course, um, to their program. So students that complete the two-year program, um, have the opportunity to accrue up to eight college credits, um, which if you calculated that, um, to the tuition nowadays, it's quite a savings for students. Um, graphic arts is adding a typography class, um, which now means that students that complete, uh, the two years of the graphic arts program have the potential of earning up to twelve college credits, which is amazing. Uh, human services will be adding an introduction to psychology course. Um, law enforcement is adding a forensic and, uh, crime scene investigation course. Um, manufacturing will be adding a class basic mill operator certification. And TV and video production will be adding the FAA Part one oh seven pilot certification for owners. Yeah, so we're pretty excited about that.
Yeah, finally said, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so again, we're just increasing opportunities for students, um, so that by the time they leave here, they are putting their best foot forward.
Yeah, but that's very good.
Yeah, yeah. Um, at the end of June, um, Nick DeLorey, our culinary arts instructor, um, went to the Vermont New York Pro Start, uh, annual conference. Um, and at that conference, he received the twenty twenty-five Vermont Pro Start Educator of Excellence Award. Um, so, um, and if you recall, Kathy Slate had received the Host Advisor of the Year Award, so we have a lot to be proud of here at Southwest Tech.
Awesome.
Um, uh, some more recent exciting news is, um, the cosmetology program is in the final stages of being approved as a school of cosmetology. Um, I'd like to publicly thank, uh, Jen Morgan Hall, our instructor, for all of her hard work. Um, she did have an inspector here today looking at our salon, um, so that hopefully we can get, uh, approved as a school of cosmetology. Um, once we receive that, um, that approval, what that means is now students can test here, um, for their state boards. Um, what typically happens is Jen has to coordinate with another school that's deemed a school of cosmetology to then bring our students to that center to be tested. So, once we're approved as a school of cosmetology, she'll be able to, uh, do that here, which will only help our students, yes. Um, on July tenth, we had a visit by the Lieutenant Governor, John Rogers. Um, a few of our board members were able to, uh, to come to that. We, uh, did dip into the LNA program for a little bit as they were in session. Um, uh, it was summertime, so obviously the, they were the only students in the building, so it was great to be able to show them that space. Um, and then we also did a tour of, uh, Southwest Tech. Um, and had a little bit of conversation with him, um, while he was here in the community. Um, so that was good. Um, as cleaning is wrapping up in our buildings, um, we've been preparing for faculty and staff to return. Um, this year, we've outlined some professional development. Um, we're using a trainer from Collins Writing um, to come in and work with teachers. Um, this trainer, her name is Cheryl McDonough. She has attended all of the um, state cluster meetings that our teachers go to. They have to go to two every year, one, once in the fall, once in the spring. Cheryl's been at both of those meetings, um, to talk, uh, talk with teachers and train them on strategies, how to integrate literacy more so into their curriculums. Cheryl's gonna be working with our teachers, um, at least three full professional development days, as well as a few days, um, while school is in session for her to push into classes to help teachers um, integrate more literacy into their, uh, curriculum. Um, and, um, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is, um, H four fifty-four, which is now Act seventy-three. Um, I hope that board members are keeping up on, um, uh, what's happening in the legislature around this. Um, if you read the act, you'll notice that CTE governance structure was not included. Um, it's sounding like there are two potential scenarios. One is for CTE to become a statewide system. Um, or the other scenario is that we, uh, CTE centers become part of a newly reorganized public ed system. Um, um, I can tell you that from the director's survey that, um, was given out back in February, the, the directors are kind of split as well. Um, fifty-eight percent felt that we should have one single, uh, statewide um, governance structure. Um, and then forty-two percent, uh, reported that they would like to be part of a regional system. Um, we're meeting again this week on Thursday. Um, we'll re- redo the, um, the survey, um, in order to provide the um, precedent for the Directors Association, hopefully more of a direction as to what the group feels. Um, but I think people I think it depends on the day when you ask the director what they would like. Um, you know, and I have to be honest, I feel the same way. You know, part of me feels like one statewide system would provide a lot of consistency, common curriculum, common professional development. Um, but I also don't want our regional needs to be missed. Um, so I guess we'll, we'll see how I feel on Thursday. Um, but in either scenario, this board does not remain this board. Um, because in a statewide system, they'll have, you know, a state board and maybe a regional advisory board. Um, and then in the regional, um, if we were to be absorbed by a public ed regional system, um, that would now become our board. So I just wanna make sure that board members are aware of this.
Yeah. Last thing I saw was that the superintendents, at least four would appoint a member of that state board.
Yeah.
For CCB. Sorry.
Yeah. Um.
So, to elaborate on that, exactly what so this board is not, under any circumstance, going still since.
No.
Is that, it's not, okay. Sounds like one way or another, no? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just to be clear.
Um.
There's still a lot of work to be done.
There is a lot of work. I mean, the first task that needs to happen is the legislature needs to develop a um, uh, they need to redistrict the state into new public ed districts. Um, that deadline is December first.
Is it not in dispute? We have no say in this matter. Just, I'm asking not that, I'm, I'm just asking for, we have no say in this matter, correct? I think you could, we can certainly advocate to our lawmakers.
Right.
And have.
Yeah, you could certainly reach out to local legislators.
Yeah, let us post a comment in the Zoom chat.
Okay.
I, sorry, I was just, I wanted to share the, as part of this discussion, I was gonna hold it till later, but AOE had built a district builder for map, that was maps, uh, map that was shared with the redistricting workforce. I forget what the committee's called. Um, and I thought it was a really interesting, um, and pretty intuitive, uh, platform to use. So, as part of this process, this is what they have been given as a resource, and you can quite literally build your own school district or supervisory union. Um, so I would recommend, uh, for everyone, really, if you have time, if you can find the time to go in and, um, kind of, you can see what they're recommending, maybe have an understanding as to why, um, and build your own, and then you can make your case to our local delegation as to why one might work and why another one might not.
So, that's a question. Um, do you, um, Thomas? Do you have any thoughts? I mean, you just laid that out. Um, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to maybe, no, we can pause this.
Sorry, I'm sorry, just.
I, I, I know, we kind of, we kind of took over a report.
Tom, Tom, sorry.
Oh, you're fine. It's only, they not have anything else to report, and we, we can go back to this.
I heard it in my butt.
Wow, I feel shame, I, I started this. It feels shame.
Yeah, I'm kidding. Um, so just the, the, um, the school redistricting, uh, it does include a goal to increase access to CTE. It is in the, uh, official Act seventy-three, which is great. Um, um, CTE courses are exempt from the class size requirements. Within that act, you'll notice CTE courses are exempt from the class size requirements, within that act, you'll notice that. You know, they laid out uh minimum class sizes for various um grade levels. CTE is exempt from that, um um unless we offer general education courses, so if we offered like a standalone. Algebra class, that class would have to adhere to the size requirements within Act seventy-three. But our CTE programs are exempt from um those minimum class sizes. Um funding still has not been decided. Um there is a group of legislators, state agencies, and educational partners that are working towards. Uh a legislative recommendation on CTE governance and funding by January. Um our current president for the Directors Association, Eric uh Rimmers. Um has been invited to represent the Directors Association at those meetings, so that's that's a good um. And that's sort of where we stand. Uh the directors did meet in July and we met with the Vermont Superintendent Association uh Executive Director Chelsea Myers, um. And she sort of walked us through H four fifty-four, which is now Act seventy-three, and what that sort of means for CTE, which. You know, there's not. A whole lot that has been decided yet, um. That's sort of where we stand. Now you go, John.
My knowledge.
Okay, done, I apologize.
I heard it in my book.
Okay, so yeah, ob- obviously we had some discussion on what you're reporting on, so uh you wanted to go back to mention the map that Thomas brought up. You had a question for his thoughts, I believe.
Well, I mean, my question is like, is there? Is it just gonna be state, the state decides, I mean, we have a huge amount of infrastructure here. And are attached to, I mean, teaching math. The elephant math is really important, teaching math can happen anywhere in the universe. Teaching what we do happens here. And we have the physical infrastructure to do this, and so. Is someone from some other entity going to decide, I guess, saying that that's what's gonna happen? Said the stuff that we have here. Programs we have here are gonna be determined by some entity that we don't even know exists yet. And what about the stuff? We have stuff. We have physical equipment. That we use to teach people. And and so is someone somewhere, like this is my question, like there's a lot of unknowns in terms.
I do envision this center still being here. It's just a matter of who. Is going to govern us.
Government, probably.
Right.
Right, we would be redistrict. It would be all. And we do have, I guess, I'm sorry to keep talking, but. But we do have some say in that, or we don't? I have no say in that, I I. I think we have that.
Thank you, reach out to local legislators.
Well. And and I I will uh just say off the lieutenant governor. This, we did have, um at least Representative Cooper was here.
Yeah.
Uh he's been here a couple times.
Yeah.
He does sit on a committee, I forget which committee, but it's somewhere in this process.
Yeah.
Uh so uh at least echoing to him and others, uh and obviously, obviously our our Manchester, Northshire reps, because our district is. I'm just thinking, let me get bang in my head as first, but as people, we we have a very. Large swath of people that we chat to. Okay, Thomas, did you have anything else, do you want to add to the map, or or anyone else for that matter, please, any comments on Meg's report?
Um. I'll I'll just say that we. Do have a say and we don't, right? We can certainly advocate, we can reach out to the folks that we know have um more influence than others, um. But it it's really gonna come down to what this working group decides, what they recommend, and then ultimately what the the state legislature, um. Uh I guess the majority of them agree to, um. My, I I guess my expectation at this point is that we're either going to be absorbed into a supervisory union, right, some some sort of regional. Um a group, uh. Or like Meg said, something that's a bit more statewide, what that actual. The statewide governing structure looks like is incredibly unclear to me, um but I would. Assuming that things move at the speed that folks want them to move at, or at least they're expected to move at, um and. Assuming that that we do have elected representation for this school or supervisory union. Um meaning this particular uh CTE is included um in a supervisory union, I would expect that the twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven. Potentially twenty twenty-eight election cycle is when we would be looking at. Um this reorganization to to happen. But again, I think, you know, the state legislature moves at. A particular speed for for many reasons, most of those I would say are the right reasons, um so a lot of it's really unknown, I would. Beyond the the map that I shared that is um accessible by the public and where you can build your own. Districts and supervisory unions, um I would also recommend if you can to attend and and. Um attend those meetings for that working group. Because you're really, you'll get an understanding and a feel, I think, as they start moving on, moving along. Um as to the the direction they would like to see uh. The legislature vote.
Thank you. Thank you, nobody else. Okay. Thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Uh Chair's report, uh not really, I I don't have much to say. Uh I just want to say again, happy retirement to Sandy.
Thank you.
We weren't sure if we had the form, so she might have had to wait till September.
Yeah.
Which that, so. Yeah, I would. And I know we're excited to take on a larger role than of your plus, she looks so. I I just want to say an early welcome back to the staff and students, obviously we won't meet until September, so uh I hope that, you know, first days are smooth and and everyone's excited to be back, it's always a. An exciting time of year, uh I'm sure everyone here looks forward to that first day, everyone.
Yeah. Shoes are squeaking.
Right, exactly, the floors are freshly glazed, um and to reiterate what you said about all those enhancements that teachers are doing, that's amazing work to them, so. It it just shows that the students may be going, but the work does certainly can be throughout the year, so kudos to all of them, um. I did wanna, uh has not been forgotten in my mind of scheduling the special tour meetings, I'll call them. Um that were proposed in our reorg back in March. Uh but it's marching, uh so I I'd love to maybe see one in October.
Right.
Like get school rolling a bit and and we can find a date in October. Uh I don't care if you do, I like a doodle poll to find the best date for most board members or things like that, um. But that was just my initial opinion was on that, trying to do three a year, like. Then March.
Yeah.
I forget when semester changes now, if it's after Christmas or.
Uh it is, it's still, it's late January.
So you have Fed March and then like. May before then.
Yeah, okay.
Those are my initial thoughts on that, open to any thoughts, suggestions.
I'm trying to, just probably what to do.
Um no, seriously, I'll be here, yeah, um. Uh the other, any any other business for anyone?
Baby has reappeared.
Micah.
Reappeared, Micah.
Sandy, can you see Asher's son?
Oh, we just meeting, yeah, I can't, that's something. Yep.
Over.
Stuff to say.
A future board member.
Yeah.
Yeah. Except that man is off the texture.
Um we do have FYI for um minutes from our policy meetings from May and June. That uh it seems like need to be just approved by committee and then we can uh um. And vote for them. The next one will be after the committee ends, which I'm sure we'll hear from Tim once he's. Ready to stand. Um, okay, with that, uh no other business before us, I would look for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Right.
Go on, stand and do it. First.
I'll say.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's too fragile, uh any names or abstentions, great. See you all uh in September and enjoy the rest of your summer and August, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Nice.
Congratulations, Sandy.
Thank you, and you're all set and ready to roll.